Good evening. I want to call the October 8th, 2012 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission to order. At this point Commissioner Ritchie Bowden will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Ritchie.
Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this day and we're thankful for the blessings you give us, for the sunshine we've enjoyed this afternoon and for the fall weather we're enjoying. Father, now as we enter into this planning commission meeting, I pray that you will give us the wisdom and the guidance that we will do the things that are fair for our community and for our citizens and for the county. I pray that you'll be with us tonight and the rest of our lives in Christ and my prayer. Amen.
Seated.
Call the roll, Gal.
Rhonda Allen, Ritchie Bowden, Veronica Buchanan, Will Jordan, Mike Kush, Craig Lynch, Pettis Reed, Steve Sandlin, Mike Vaught, Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a kind of a special guest tonight, Trey Smith, from the current leadership of Rutherford. Class is here and I'd like to welcome him to observe how we do business. Welcome Trey. Any items deferred or withdrawn?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time we'll go into our zoning request and public hearings. Item number 6A, Spring House Development LLC, item 12-8011 rezoning, location 8100 Franklin Road. The commissioner is Trey Gooch. The size of the site is approximately 75 acres, less than. Tax map 94, parcel 53. Existing zone is R15. The proposed zoning is a PUD, Planned Unit Development.
Thank you Chairman Phillips. The applicant is proposing to develop a planned residential development called Nature Walk. You may remember this from last month when we reviewed it. It was deferred at that meeting in order to allow them to have another neighborhood meeting. But I'll review the development anyway, just to refresh your memory. It has 165 new single-family residential lots on 75 acres with approximately 26 acres set aside for open space with which is roughly 35 percent of the development. These 75 acres was previously approved as part of the Spring House subdivision and this new proposal will increase the lots by about 29. The remainder of the property, approximately 129 acres, will continue to be developed based on the Spring House plan, which is approved. In fact, there was, Section 1 was recorded in August of 2010 and that section created 36 residential lots and a portion of the step system, which this Nature Walk will eventually tie into. The proposed lots are to be a minimum of 7,800 square feet. Setbacks are 25 feet in the front, 20 feet in the rear, and five foot on the side with a minimum of 15 foot separation between buildings for fire protection. Let's see. The primary interest of the property will be on Franklin Road, however, will also have connection to Shores Road through the Spring House development. Now according to CUD, the water line from Jim Cedar Drive will support fire hydrants and that's coming through the Spring House development. However, the water line on Franklin Road will not. The situation is further complicated by the property being located in two separate pressure zones. All that being said, the applicant will just have to work closely with the CUD engineers to design a system that will provide sufficient fire hydrants for the development. And if you have any questions on that, Ms. Jennifer Wood is present and she can answer any more questions for that. Nature Walk would be zoned for the Blackman Elementary, middle and high schools and the school board has indicated that there's some capacity for new students in all three of those schools. The reason it was deferred is to have another neighborhood meeting. They did hold one on September 24th and you actually have a sheet in front of you, changes to the proposed restrictions for Nature Walk. You have two. One was emailed to staff a week ago and this one's revised, a shorter one. Basically it proposes that the minimum house square footage will increase a bit. There'll be some additional landscaping and there'll be more defined separation between the chart and I'm sure the applicant can go into more detail on that. The Rutherford County Comprehensive Plan does classify this property as being in the urban character area and this would be in line with that proposal. And just a quick look at the property, which is covered in trees. And this is of course Franklin Road. And just wanted to give you an idea of the Spring House development that is existing off Shores Road and kind of the construction and the houses what look like in that development. The applicant is present and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Elizabeth or the staff? Steve?
So did they have that community meeting?
They did. They did. That was actually their second community meeting. It was on September 24th in the evening and I think it was fairly well attended.
I was in attendance and we probably had somewhere between 15 and 20 people there as I recall. It was a very well attended meeting. Yes, sir.
Well, it seemed like before there were some issues in both of these meeting up and also the size of homes that have already been started and what was going on over here and compared to the new development on the other side and what come out of?
Right. Well, originally the, and again, I'll just kind of give an overview and the applicants may want to speak in more depth about it, but the original proposal was for a 1,600 square foot minimum heated area for the homes. After hearing the concerns from the neighbors in the area, they did agree to go up to 1,800 square foot and that seemed to sit well with the neighbors. Increase the amount of the, well, put a amount of minimum brick, hardy board, stone, that kind of thing, a minimum 35 percent. Really just what you see here on the sheet is pretty much what they went over at the meeting. This is pretty accurate as I recall the things that they talked about. Very, I thought it was a very productive meeting, very constructive. The developers listened to the concerns that the neighbors had and vice versa. I thought it was a very good meeting.
We mentioned a little bit last month as well as you did this month, Elizabeth, about the water pressure for the 96 side. So what, I mean, is it by the time they get cranked up and get the roads in, ready to start development, they'll have the pressure there to?
No.
To get water, fire hydrants or what?
They're going to have to bring the water line down from Shores Road. So even though they plan on starting on Franklin Road, they will have to install the water line through the entire development in the very beginning. And they've been in discussions with CUD about that, but that's where the water line's going to have to come from for Section 1.
Is that one of the conditions, Elizabeth?
Not a condition that's spelled out, but of course it would be required that when a subdivision plaque came in, it would have to have fire hydrants with every thousand feet of the lot. So I mean, it is required in our subregs.
Other questions? If not, we'll get into our public hearing and I declare our public hearing open. Anyone wishes to speak for or against? And I think we'd be well served to start off with the applicant.
Hello, I'm Jamie Rea with SEC, here to answer any additional questions. Elizabeth and Doug reiterated, the biggest concerns were the minimum square footages, which we bumped them up to from 1,600 to 1,800 square footage. There was a couple of issues regarding rental property, stuff like that, but we're, they're going to, Park Trust is going to add that to the restrictions and stuff like that. But we addressed all their concerns and John, Park Trust has sent them out what we're submitting and they've all approved that. So we've tried to address everything they've asked in that meeting through these comments there. So if you approve our, that, just to prove it contingent upon those additional changes there, those 1 through 4, and then the 1 through 3 at the bottom. But I'll be glad to answer any additional questions. I know we've been over this numerous times.
Jamie, I believe Steve has a question.
Yes, sir.
Touch on the fire hydrants a little bit there. I'm still trying to grasp what-
The fire hydrants, well, we're having to extend the, and I won't speak for seed, I'll try my best if I'm, but the flows up front, they're from two different zones. And in order to get the zone up front, up, increased so we can get, you know, 20 PSI in the fire hydrants and stuff and try to get a minimum of, what, 500 gallons out of the fire hydrants, we have to loop the line, which has got plenty of flow and pressures from Shores Road all the way through the development. We have to do that for the first phase of Nature Walk up front on Franklin Road in order to get our fire hydrants to meet state standards for fire flow. But-
Instead of coming from that 60?
Correct. It'll, it'll, it'll act, correct. You're going to, we're going to have it, but what it'll do, it'll make the zones equalize and have better pressures and flows.
Questions or comments? Thank you, Jamie. John, anything? Okay. Anyone else wishes to speak for or against this proposed rezoning? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed and we're open for business, Commissioner.
I think it may have been my idea last month to defer this and I do appreciate them working with, having this meeting and working with the neighbors. That's exactly what we were hoping for in that deferral. And I don't see anybody here from the adjoining neighborhoods, so that's a good sign. From what I can tell that everybody's in favor of this, or at least worked it out. And so with that, I'll make a motion to approve contingent to all staff comments and the changes on this sheet of paper.
And I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All who's in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Mr. Chairman-
Opposition?
I'm sorry, I was slugging my microphone. I just had a question that I wanted to ask Doug before we vote. We all understand that in the restrictive covenants, that those are not enforced by our codes department. That's a civil to civil enforcement. And so I just want to make sure that, I guess, the people who are, you know, are satisfied with this additional piece of paper that we have, that somehow, I guess, they understand that these are things that are not going to be enforced by our zoning department. And so I'm just not sure how that's going to happen. Because for example, you've got, no person or entity may purchase a home in Nature Walk with the intent of creating income-producing rental property. We know all the time, people, you know, buy a home and then jobs relocate them and now they can't sell their home and then they try to rent it. You know, I mean, that's question number one that pops in my head. And then you've got, you know, no vehicles may be parked on the street on a long-term basis. Okay, what's long-term? Who decides it's long-term? You know what I'm saying? So I just don't want to set us up for failure here and have homeowners come in complaining to David that they were told one thing, just like they told us last month, we were sold one thing and now something different's happening. We don't have any authority to enforce restrictive covenants, so-
And as far as covenants go, no, I believe you're right. And I think that'll be really incumbent upon the homeowner association to really police those kind of things. I mean, like you said, some of those things, it's going to be really hard for staff to do. Now, if they're making an actual conditions of the planned development, some of those will be enforced by, like the percent brick and those kinds, those are things that we can, you know, help with, but-
Right. But the last two things that I mentioned aren't anything that we would normally regulate.
If they're in restrictive covenants, then correct. Those are things that we wouldn't be able to enforce because they're, like you said, private agreements. So, yes, ma'am.
Is there anything more that we need to do to make that clear to the public or, I mean, maybe just having this conversation right now is all that we can do?
Unfortunately, I think besides what we're doing right now, I think that's about it. Because even just regular, traditionally zoned R15 subdivisions that go through that have restrictive covenants, it's the same thing with them.
I just don't want any of those homeowners out there who were satisfied by this document to be misled, that now there's some enforceability on the county's part because there's not.
For most of these, I believe you're correct with that. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I'm ready to vote.
Thank you Commissioner Allen. Any other questions before we re-vote or vote? All who's in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 6B, Nadal Abbas, item 12A014, rezoning and conditional use, location 3199 Franklin Road. The county commissioner is Gary Farley. The size of lot is approximately .45 acres on tax map 920, parcel 17.00. Existing zoning is R15. Proposed zoning is services and the conditional use would be professional office space and beauty salon. Elizabeth?
Thank you. The applicant is proposing to convert this existing house to, into an office space and/or a beauty salon. The main limitation for this property is actually going to be the septic system, which was impacted by the expansion of Franklin Road. So it is what it is. There is no adding to it. Based on conversations with T-DOT Groundwater Protection, the existing system can probably support an office with a maximum of eight employees or a one-chair hair salon. So that is going to be a limiting factor that, you know, is just existing with this property. Now, the property will continue to maintain its access on Camden Court and the city of Murfreesboro does have future plans at some point to signalize the intersection of Hillwood Boulevard, Camden Court and Franklin Road. So they actually have asked for us to put a condition on there to require some right-of-way dedication to facilitate that improvement in the future. Now, the applicant did create a paved parking lot in the, before applying for rezoning. So it's unclear at this time whether this will meet the dimension requirements for parking spaces and aisles. Fairly likely, some of it will have to be ripped up in order to install the buffer yard on the property. So we'll just have to sort that out if this is proved at the site plan phase. The, I'm sure you'll remember the four houses to the west of this were zoned fire and services for various different professional office spaces, the most recent one being the orthodontist office on the corner. And then in addition, the two houses immediately to the east were zoned services for professional office space. The Rutherford County Comprehensive Plan does show this property being located in the urban character area and this would be in line with uses in that area. So just give you a quick look at the house and see the various businesses around it. And I want to show you the parking area that has already been installed in the back. So you can see it's really, really close to the property line and it'll probably need to be moved. And that's Camden Court. And then across the way you can see the orthodontist and their parking area. Is the applicant present? Okay. I don't believe the applicant's present, but I'll be happy to answer any questions. Oh, I forgot to mention, it was brought to the attention of staff that this property may have been purchased with a homeowner occupancy requirement. It's not within the county's jurisdiction to enforce that, but I just want to make you aware that that could be a potential issue for this applicant.
Any questions for staff?
If there's no representative applicant, is our policy not to at least defer this?
If you wish.
Have done that in the past. You may, you still may want to have the public hearing just to see if there's anybody here, obviously.
I'm wondering if anybody's here for, before action on this, I would hope.
Right. Right. But that's typically what you have done in the past. Yes, sir.
We'll have a public hearing and in case anyone is here that wishes to address the commission. So I'll declare the public hearing open for item 12A014. Is anyone here wishing to speak for or against? If not, I'll declare the public hearing closed and now-
Make a motion to defer.
Motion to defer and a second for 30 days, one month?
Well, yeah, I just go with one month.
And we will have another public hearing at that time, will we not?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
We'll advertise as such.
Any discussion on the motion? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. This item will be deferred until our November 6 p.m. meeting. Item 6C, Lucas Namath, item 12-8015, rezoning and conditional use, location 2887 Barfield Road. County commissioner is Gary Farley. The site of the size is approximately six acres. Tax map is 124, parcel 15. Existing zoning is R15. The proposed zoning is for services and the conditional use permit, general retail trade, general professional services, food services and professional office space. Elizabeth?
Yes. The applicant has provided a list of potential uses, commercial uses for this property. You can see they gave us a rough concept plan. The corner, the corner of the lot on Barfield Road and Veterans Parkway would likely be a convenience store, a gas station. Maybe lot two or three could potentially be professional office space, retail stores or a salon. And as I'll get into more detail in a little bit, lot four is actually going to be fronting on the Murfreesboro City Greenway system. And so they thought compatible uses for that, such as a bike shop or a restaurant overlooking the river, is kind of what they're seeing for lot four. There was actually a previous rezoning case on this property in 2005, very similar to the request you have before you tonight. The application was deferred and then eventually withdrawn, I believe due to the acquisition of right-of-way for Veterans Parkway that was taking place right at that time. So if you haven't been out there lately, the road network actually has changed fairly dramatically in the recent, recent months. Veterans Parkway now, of course, goes all the way to Church Street and Barfield Crescent no longer does. And so it's a pretty dramatic change. The, the city does not have any plans on putting a traffic signal at the intersection of Barfield Road and Veterans Parkway at this time, but in conversations with them, they are going to continue to assess the situation. If one becomes warranted at a later date, they will eventually put one out there. As I talked about the Greenway, here's a document from the city of Murfreesboro. See, the back corner of the property will be bought for the Greenway use by the city of Murfreesboro. And in conversations with them, they indicated that they will be acquiring these easements in the next few months and that they didn't feel like this rezoning would have any impact on those discussions. So they weren't concerned about it. Now, the comprehensive plan does classify this property as being located within the Barfield Rural Center. The rural centers are intended to permit a compatible mixture of residential, institutional and commercial uses with a neighborhood setting. So we are hoping that the applicant will be mindful of the existing buildings in the Barfield area when he's designing the site and create a development that's visually compatible with the surrounding area. And just to give you a quick look at the surrounding area, here's the property in question. And then you can see the new Veterans Parkway. And then this is actually looking down Barfield Road. The property is on the right, so you can see, see that angle of it. And that's the intersection of Barfield and Veterans. The applicant is present and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Elizabeth, any questions for staff? Okay. At this time, we'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against will have the opportunity to speak, but we would like to start off by hearing from the applicant, if he is here, he or she is here. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Amath and my address is 2696 Barfield Road. I live just down the road from this property that I would like to get rezoned. And it's gone from, as some of you may know, it's gone from being, having road frontage on Barfield Road to now being on the corner of Veterans Parkway, which is that five-lane highway. So it's very, there's quite a bit of traffic. It's very busy. And I think it would be appropriate for a convenience store, a gas station and some, some sort of commercial retail. I live on Barfield Road and I often have to go, you know, several miles to, you know, to get services that I think would be convenient for people that live on Kimbrough, that what's existing, you know, now Kimbrough, some of those subdivisions, and even up Barfield Crescent where they have that, they have that Crescent store up there on the corner, a few miles up the road, but it's, it's quite a ways up. So my intention is to do something nice. I do some residential construction, but I think this would be, I build homes and have done some subdivisions, but I think that this would be appropriate for commercial, just because of the amount of traffic right there on the corner. I don't think that residential would be appropriate. So there's already a little bit of commercial. On Barfield Road, there's that new, and there's that new fire station just down the road. And then there's that automotive shop that I think has a conditional use permit across from Martha's Haven. It's probably a quarter mile from this property. So are there any questions? I've looked at the traffic counts and from what I've seen on the city's website, it looks like Barfield Road was around 7,000 and the, and the other road was, Barfield Crescent was 13,000, I believe. So combined that would be 20,000. And I think with the, with the new Veterans Parkway, I just think there's, there's going to be a whole lot of traffic on that road. I mean, there already is. I sit there and look at the people turning from Veterans Parkway onto Barfield Road and, you know, it's just one after another. But I think that once that road is completely finished, it'll have a whole lot of traffic, even more than now, maybe twice. I don't know.
Do you have any idea when you might start something there or?
You know, I, I don't know, you know, soon, hopefully. It's got a lot of, it's got a lot of traffic now, so I think it would be, I think that it would get business right now if something were there right now.
But you haven't done this type of development before?
Well, I mean, I've got, I've got some, I've got experience developing and, you know, we've got Bill Huddleston who does our engineering and planning and so forth. And, you know, we may have a partner that comes in and does some of the commercial and so forth. So we have, yeah, we have professional people that we, that we use.
Would you have access to sewer there or do you have septic system?
Right now, we don't have sewer. It's, it would be, it's about a half a mile down Barfield Crescent Park is the closest sewer. We have, we had the soils done a few years ago and we have a lot of soils, a lot of good soils that perk out there. Enough. Bill Huddleston says it's enough to do what we have in mind as far as the planning. Sewer would be, you know, better long-term if we can get it, but, but at this point, it's the septic is, there's plenty of septic site.
If you were to have access to sewer, you'd have to meet the city's design standards and all. And it may be a little early to ask this question to Doug, but what kind of design standards are we looking at here? I mean, do we have design standards for a convenience market that would make sure we would, besides the buffering and things like that?
Well, as far as the, as far as the actual design of the building and the materials, I mean, a quick answer is no. The county doesn't have any kind of design standards. Now, there are landscaping and buffering requirements, especially on the sites that are adjacent to residentially zoned property. You know, those will have to be probably a type 2 buffer, I would say, for that. But obviously, between the lots themselves, if they're all zoned properly, there wouldn't be any buffering there. But as far as materials being used and anything, now that's something that you have in the past on conditional use permits have conditioned those kind of things. But just with a straight zoning, no, we don't have anything like that presently.
Have the ability to ask for that, or do, or do we with the rezoning? I mean, is that like-
But with the conditional use permit, that is something that you have done.
As part of this, yeah.
Right.
What are your plans for material? Is it going to, personally, I'd rather for the residents out there see a brick building or a split-faced block instead of a metal-sided building or something like that.
And, and we haven't, you know, we don't, we don't have a specific design drawn up, but I own the house adjacent to this, to, at 2862 Barfield Road, and I live on Barfield Road. And, you know, my, I definitely am interested in this property enhancing the area, you know, rather than, you know, bringing it down. I, you know, there are just, right next to that, the property, just across from Veterans Parkway, there are quite a few houses that are a little rundown. There are some trailers and so forth. And I would like to bring the property values up with this development. And I don't know how to, you know, I don't have anything specific other than that's, that's my intent, is to make it nice.
Would you be willing to state, you know, as part of the conditions, that you would do a masonry exterior, be it split-faced block or hardy plank or brick, you know, on the exterior of the, of the structure, instead of us being worried about it just being a metal-sided building out there?
I think so, yeah.
I wouldn't think that'd be that huge of a concession. I'm, you know, it's a little bit more construction cost, but you have a better, you know, more attractive building.
Those traffic counts were, what was the period of time?
The traffic counts that we had in the staff report were from 2011, but I don't know how accurate they're going to be to the new road because the traffic counts were from Kimbrough and then they were from Barfield Crescent. And I can read this.
Over how long a period of time?
They were just once. I mean, I think TDOT has traffic counters out and about and they count once a year. And in 2011, there was 9,687 vehicles on Barfield Crescent and 2,914 vehicles on Kimbrough Road, but-
Daily?
Yeah.
Daily. Yes, sir.
That's daily, yes.
That's average daily travel. Yes, sir. But as Ms. Embley stated, you know, now that the road network here is changed as significantly as it did, you know, that, and they just opened this segment up, say, within the last month or so, those numbers are probably not accurate now. I would imagine that's getting a heavier use, especially on the Veterans Parkway, maybe not so much on the Barfield side, but the Veterans Parkway, definitely.
I guess, man, this looks pretty logical to me, given the location. Are there any floodplain area on this lot and is there any consideration?
Yes, there is floodplain area on this lot. It's part of the portion- Yes, there is floodplain area on this lot. It's part of the portion that will be acquired for the greenway, and I'm sure there will still be remaining floodplain on the property, but they can design to the standards.
Most of it's out of the floodplain.
Most of it is out, yes.
And I've, I've also, my brother is a, is a partner in this property, and he was, he was shaking his head at me in terms of, in terms of making any promises about the exterior being all masonry. I don't know what the rules or the guidelines are in terms of approving, but I guess he doesn't want to make any promises in terms of specific materials to be used. I think, I think our feeling is just in general that, you know, that with that five-lane highway, that commercial is the, is the best use for that property.
We just proved a Dollar General about two months ago out at Last Cassis, and we required it to be brick, you know, and that's part of our design, you know, our, our ability here.
Yeah.
And if we just give you a, you know, you could go out and build out of plywood if it met building codes, you know, and the neighbors about to be looking at it, you know, and I can appreciate you on the house next door.
Yeah.
You could move, you know, and stuff. But that's just my, my feelings on it, but...
Doug, we'll still, I mean, he'd have to come back with a site plan. Could this be addressed at that time?
Well, if there's no actual condition for it, I mean, you could ask him to do it, but there's no requirement in the zoning, you have to follow that.
In the conditions right now, there?
If you put something in the conditions right now, then they would be bound. But again, if you just, if you didn't, and it came to the site plan, I don't think you could require it at that point without there being some specific regulation to point to.
Doug, I'm going to ask the dreaded turn lane question. How and when would we know, and with Veterans Parkway being the type of road that it is, I mean, would you, would you get a turn lane off Veterans or not, or, because especially for the type of use that we're talking about?
On Veterans Parkway right through there, it actually is a five-lane cross section. There already is a lane, a middle turn lane there. Now, right at that intersection, it starts tapering back down, but you can see on that shot right there on the, on the, on the screen, it is, there is a center turn lane currently on, on Veterans Parkway.
Go back to that last shot. So, right there where there's a, where there's a right-hand turn lane, is that?
I believe that's actually going onto Barfield Road. That's the property on the right-hand side. Yes, ma'am.
So, is there?
Yeah, there's already turn lane. Yeah, that, that lane, that, that, the right turn lane right there is actually accessing Barfield Road right now.
The property that I'm, is the subject property then there on the corner? Is it on the right of that picture?
Yes, yeah, basically, yeah, that, next to the sidewalk there, that, that's the subject property we're talking about.
Okay. So, they just need to get approval for a cut-in, or else the turn lane would just be there for, to get them off Veterans onto Barfield where they could enter from that side?
Yeah, I mean, either way. I mean, the, the concept plan we've seen at this point shows access points on both sides, but again, that's, that's, that's something we would take a look at at site plan review phase, about as far as where the access points were, and make sure that they were adequate distances away from the intersection.
And since we, since we don't have specific architectural design guidelines, and we are concerned about rezoning in nodes like this, what should our next step be as a commission to make sure that we can require certain types of materials to be used, and certain percentages, that sort of thing?
Well, as Ms. Embley alluded to a little earlier in her staff comments, I think she's about to pull that map up, you'll, you'll see that it's actually part of, the comprehensive plan identified this as the, as what's called a rural center, one of the nodes that we identified during the planning process. She'll bring up the map here in just a second.
Well, and what I heard her say was, and we hope that they would look around and make it compatible with the neighborhood.
Right.
I, I want to be more than hope. I want to ensure.
Well, at this point, again, the, the county, we don't have any kind of design standards. Now, something that, as staff, that we've talked about, I think even once the Planning Commission members before, is after the new zoning is approved, is going back into some of these small communities, like your Barfields, your Milton's, your Last Cassis, Christianas, whatnot, and maybe doing some small sub-area studies there to look at the type of development that you can see there, just as far as the scale, as the setbacks, all those things, and the materials being used, and maybe create some overlay zones specifically for those smaller areas to address these type of situations where, with, yes, absolutely, with community input. I, I mean, I think this is really kind of highlighting the need for that. You know, I don't think, you know, from staff standpoint, I don't think we're necessarily concerned with the uses necessary that might be approved there. You know, we've had a couple of meetings with the applicants, and some of the, the ideas they have, we think have a lot of merit, especially, you know, tailoring some of those businesses to the greenway traffic that will be there. But at the same time, this is one of those smaller nodes that's out in the county that has a different development pattern that you would see than you would see out and further in those rural areas, to have the larger tracks with farms and whatnot on. These are smaller parcels, and they have a different development style. So, I think those areas are in need of closer study. So, I, I think this highlights the need for something like that, and when the zoning's approved, we'd like to start moving in that direction, and start addressing some of those smaller communities, and how we might be able to better plan for just the appearance of future development in those areas.
So, what's the implementation then for an overlay district like that? Let's say we get those in place. Anything that's already rezoned isn't, doesn't have to adhere to those, or it does, or?
Well, it depends. A lot of it depend on the area that you target to be in the overlay area. I mean, basically, it's, as the name sounds, it's, it's a layer that lays over the existing zoning. You know, in this situation, it may be, you know, relaxed setbacks. It may be, you know, construction materials as far as what you use for new construction in those areas. It could be a variety of things. And just because we have one in Barfield doesn't mean it'll look the same out in Last Cassis or in Milton. You know, we would anticipate those being a little different. But as far as how you would implement those, it would really follow the same zoning process as we're doing right now. You'd have a public hearing here. There'd be a public hearing also in front of the Board of Commissioners, and their approval would implement the overlay zone on those properties.
So, that's really my question. So, once they're implemented, everybody's in it?
That's correct. Wherever you identify it to be, but yes, yes, ma'am.
So, if this, if this building gets built before that's implemented?
Then that's grandfathered.
They're on their own. If it's not built before they're implemented, then they have to fall under the guidelines.
That'd be correct, yes, ma'am.
Questions for staff before we go on with the public hearing?
I'd like to have one more question with the applicant, if I could.
Mr. Ameth, would you come back up, please?
Can I let my brother step up these parts?
Absolutely. Sir, I see you, and I'll, I'll get to you, okay? Be patient.
Hi.
Name an address, please.
My name is Misha Ameth. I live at 2700 Barfield Road. I also own an interest in this property.
The only question I'm asking, I, I think you have done some development, whatever, but I'm just wanting to, did y'all do the development at Sunrise on the western part of the county, Sunrise Development?
The residential development, yes, we did.
There were some issues involved in that. Have those all been cleared up, or?
I don't know of any issues, and I'm not sure how that relates to this particular development.
Well, I just, I was just wondering. I just, I just wanted to be sure. I think there were some things that come up there and whatever, and just wanted to check on that to be sure.
I'm not familiar with what it is you're speaking, with what it is you're referring to, but if you'd like to be specific, I could certainly address that.
Well, I just, I just knew there were some property things out there, and some things that were developed there and whatever. So, I, I do know that, you know, it ended up being that the road was, it's just owned by the county, by the individuals or whatever there. It was not able to be turned into the, given back to the county?
Yeah, that's, that's a private drive.
Okay.
But this is on a road that's a five-lane city highway.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about here, but I just wanted to make-
So, we're not talking about building a private drive.
So, there's nothing involved out there?
No. And then we're also, we also have a county road as well.
Okay. You've answered what I need to know.
Ameth, did you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I'd like to add that we're, we're perfectly willing to comply with the county guidelines on, and building requirements for this particular development. But, and we always have, and we'll continue to do so.
As long as you're up here, but you're not willing to go, to adhere to, if part of the guy, conditions for rezoning was for a masonry building, be it split-faced block or brick or hardy plank, you're, you're not willing to do that?
That's not a county requirement right now.
No, it's not. But the property is not, it's not, it's not a given that the property will be rezoned, and on a regular basis, as far as rezoning to make the neighborhoods look better and all, do we do it all the time as part of our conditions? We place whatever conditions on there within reason, and, and we do it on a regular basis, require the buildings to be masonry or something like that, or on three sides, or exposed sides, and things like that. So, so you would just assume it'd be turned down if that requirement were, be placed on it?
So, if I were to agree to do masonry on the buildings, I would be more likely to be approved than if I were not, if I were to say no?
I'm just thinking as one member of the commission here, because I know that when you're going out in a residential area and rezoning something commercial, then a lot of times, we try and, you know, make sure the building looks, you know, up to, up to standards. And I realize there may be some trailers over there that, that probably won't be there in a few years' time, because it is a, a five-lane road there now, and things. And we're also setting the standard for that area, where if somebody's able to go out there and put a metal building up, then that's probably going to be what comes the next track down, in my opinion.
Well, we build, we, everything we've ever built has been very nice, and we build brick homes. But I'm not willing to, I'm not willing to commit to building something and have a, that is above the standards that the county has already set forth. I'm willing to comply.
We don't have standards for a commercial building besides meeting fire codes and things like that.
And we have a 30-inch water main that's adjacent to this property, so we've got lots of water.
But I mean, you could build, you could build your building out of vinyl siding, and, and that would meet codes.
We've never built anything out of vinyl siding.
I'm just saying you could, and that would meet codes if we didn't put any conditions on it.
Well, if, if you have a problem with vinyl siding, then you should have conditions against vinyl siding. But if you want to deny me because I'm not willing to comply with a standard that is not in the guidelines, then that's, that does not seem like it would be legal, in my opinion.
Ask the attorney, Mr. McCary, is it within our bounds on a, on a rezoning and conditional use to put a standard in for a masonry building?
The, well, first, let me say, I understood your question to be a question of whether or not the applicant was willing to agree to some type of condition.
And I may have gotten too far over into a personal conversation here. I apologize for that.
And so, I think that was the question you initially asked. I'll just refer you to Section 7.01 of the zoning resolution that deals with conditions on conditional uses, and says that the boards may impose such conditions upon the premises benefited by the permit for conditional use, as may be necessary to prevent or minimize any adverse effects of such conditional use, and to ensure the compatibility of the conditional use with the other property in the vicinity of such use. That, in essence, is the ability or the, the leeway, you might say, that the board has in setting out conditions on conditional uses. So, to the extent that it falls within that general definition, and is to prevent adverse effects, or to make it compatible with the general vicinity, then there's some leeway in terms of what the board can require on a conditional use, not on the rezoning.
Currently, there are trailers in the area on tires that were pulled in by trucks. So, I think that the types of, the types of building that we've done in the past are brick, and they are nice. The types of other buildings that are there are, there are a few that are nice. But there are also trailers, very rundown, ugly trailers. So, anything we build is obviously going to be above what's currently on the property and adjacent to the property. What I'm not willing to do is commit to, to build something that I may, may later regret. And I could stand here, and I could say, "Yeah, yeah, we'll do that," and then turn around and sell the property in six months. But I'm not going to do that. I'm going to be straight with you, and I'm going to say, "I'm not going to commit to building masonry if it's not required by the county, and there isn't masonry on the property right now and adjacent to the property."
Mr. Chairman, I had a question. Dale, what is the situation on this other subdivision that these guys said they were in development, and what, what are the situations there?
Well, I think this is about, that was, we talked about, we, 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 we didn't, something that come through the Planning Commission then, as far as, uh...
The development self-care to the planning commission, it's true, it's natural, it's true, that's developed off of the private, so, that was before we limited their development to three lots, to that amount, they were allowing, you know, more lots off of the private, we did.
Okay, so how many, how many lots are off this private road?
Off that private road, there's probably, you know, 10 or 12.
Wow. So, it's not the developer's responsibility then, in bringing that road up to county standards, and it's a private road, they can, it's pothole city, then it's pothole city. How many, we're having to go out and inspect the homes, though, correct?
Oh, yeah, we do, I do, we do home inspection, we, we, the bill, the bill typically point to code.
Okay. So, y'all don't own the road, then? Y'all finished the development out there, and it's up to the homeowners?
We finished, I think we developed either 11 or 12 lots off that road, off that private road. It's a gravel road. And then another individual developed about five more.
Wow. And that was predating our...
Yeah, it was probably 10 years ago.
And that's still going on? I mean, that's situation?
There may be some, it could be lots off, I don't know, something just kind of local.
David, we don't have any issues with them then on, on the development of the homes and, and all that, and meeting the standards and everything then? Okay.
I had one follow-up question on the design elements. Many times when we do a rezoning, a lot of times, the developer will bring to us just basically, almost like a speculative drawing of what their vision is for that property. And that helps us understand kind of what your concept is moving forward. And your brother indicated you didn't really have a firm concept, and you keep using the word "nice," and, and I like the word, but the word can be very subjective. And so, I'm just curious to know whether or not you'd be willing to attach some type of a, you know, speculative drawing that would give us some idea of what it is that you envision for that property, and that'll help us sort of gauge, because sometimes we can attach that to the, to the approval, and then whether you sell it or down the road, whatever, everybody going forward sort of knows what the vision is long-term for that area.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I'm willing to tell you that our plan, I, I can, we can certainly come up with something like that. And I'll just tell you that right now, our plan is to do a convenience store on the corner, attached to small, and small commercial to the west of that. Also, on the back lot there, we plan on doing some sort of small commercial that would cater to pedestrians on the greenway, such as a bike shop, canoe rental, kayak rental, some sort of a, some sort of a snack stand. The greenway doesn't have anything like that right now. And we think that it would go over well as a put-in, a potential put-in for, you know, kayakers and canoeers to put in on that property. We can rent them their kayaks, their canoes, they put in, and then they get picked up later on down the road at Highway 99, or some other point. So, yeah. Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ameth. Okay, anyone else wishes to speak? Thank you for your patience.
My name is Austin Javes. My wife and I live at 2867 Barfield Road, right across the road from where they're hoping to develop this. And as soon as we heard about it and understood that there may be a gas station convenience store right there on the corner across from our street, we're thinking, "Oh, no," just from the light pollution. And then if a gas station comes in on Barfield Road, you know, they would be turning out on Barfield Road all times of the day and night, especially tonight, then the headlights would be shining right into our home. And that's, that's our biggest concern. And it was interesting listening to you all about the aesthetics of the community, because, like they said, there's trailers across the road. because, like I said, there's trailers across the road. Another part of the property that's right across the road from them, I understand, is also going to be applying for a commercial application. And I hope that Mr. Namath will set the standard for Barfield. That's, that's what needs to be done because it will go commercial. It's gonna be a busy, it's gonna be a busy intersection. And that's all I have to say, you know, so...
Can you take a pointer, you got a pointer, Doug? Anybody? And show us, show us where you live.
We've been there for over 30 years now. And I understand their, you know, their, what's the word? You know, the idea that it's a good place to put commercial property, I understand that. I congratulate them for their foresight. But I guess it's one of those things, not in my backyard to have a gas station right across the street. That's, that's our concern. So that's all, thank you.
Anyone else wishes to speak for or against this proposed rezoning? Not, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, we're open for business.
Doug, I've got a couple of questions. A gentleman right there, there's three looks-like lots down below there, or three little squares. Can you tell me what those are right below his house?
Well, at one point, those were, as I remember, those were single-family homes. But I believe those lots were purchased, and Mr. Lewis is in the audience from the city. I believe those lots were purchased as part of the widening project for Veterans Parkway. As I recall, those were actually homes at one point.
Okay, so that's nothing...
At this point, it's still our 15 zone. There's no commercial zoning on that property. No, it's still in the county. But they, I think the city may own it, again, but it's still in our jurisdiction. Correct, I believe that's correct. Mr. Lewis is kind of nodding his head a little bit. Robert, can you come on, can you come on, if that's all right? I don't mean to jump on your responsibility there, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Robert Lewis from the Planning Department, City of Murfreesboro. And I think that if Doug did say that those properties were purchased as part of the right-of-way, then that's... And what was your question again?
I think he was just wanting to know what they were. And I said, "At one point, I believe they were single-family homes," as I recall.
I don't, I don't recall, I don't recall what they were. But if the, if the city did purchase those as right-of-way, then I'm sure that...
Does the city have a long-term plan for those, the portion that's left? I assume they were larger, and the city tore down the houses, Doug, and does the city have a plan for those remaining portion of those?
I don't know of any right off the top of my head.
All right, the other question was, in the staff recommendations, in the second paragraph, it says Lot 4, the entrance to Lot 4 is to be from Veterans Parkway, not Barfield Road. I was wondering why you would, why would we put that stipulation on it?
Well, I think originally, as we were looking at the original concept plan, we had a little bit of unease with that. We'd like to see most of the primary access off of Veterans Parkway. However, they've kind of, kind of refined the plan a little bit. And of course, what they're showing right now as far as the possible lot layout, does it necessarily, it does show an access on the Barfield Road, but it also does show shared access among a lot of the parcels there. So I have more of a comfort level than I did originally. The original lot layout, we just weren't real crazy about. But I think with refinement, even an access on Barfield Road, I think, won't be a detriment, so... Right, and even, I mean, just so you all realize, the concept plan that we included in with your agenda material, that is, even if this is approved, they're not bound by that. You know, this is really just a preliminary, this is what might happen. You know, they may get in there and look at it and say, "Actually, it might work better if we do it this way." You know, they're not bound by this, so just... It could, yes, it could just become one big development. You're absolutely right, yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I have a question for Josh. Since we've had so much discussion about the design element of this, and we don't have any specific guidelines in place, and I know you said that we could put restrictions on the actual conditional use, but not the rezoning, would it be appropriate for us to defer this until they have some sort of schematic that they can offer to add to the concept plan? So we can have a fuller picture of what their plans are?
I think you have the ability to defer it. If you, if you want to defer it for a meeting, to get and ask for further information, you could do that.
Questions?
Well, if there are no further questions, I'd like to make that a motion that we defer this till next month's meeting, and we ask the developer to come back with a schematic drawing that gives us some idea of what "nice" is, what their concept of "nice" is, so we can attach that then to the conditional use permit.
We have a motion and a second to defer. Questions or comments on that motion? I saw the applicant...
Yeah, and just for clarification, I specifically want design elements. I want to know what their vision is for the materials for the build-out, what it's gonna look like. That's what I'm looking for.
Not for the rezoning, but for the conditional use?
To add to the conditional use, correct.
I saw the, one of the applicants standing. If there are no objections, I'd like to call him back up for whatever comment he'd like to make on the motion.
As long as we were bringing up the past, I just wanted to talk about the 69 acres that we worked on out on Barfield Crescent Road. We worked with Jamie Reed on that project for some time, got it designed, and we had everything ready to go. And the Planning Commission acted outside the law and turned it down. And Jack Gritten filed a lawsuit against this law firm right here. You guys lost, like, $750,000. So if you guys want to go that direction and, and deny me based on something, some standard that doesn't exist, this is all televised. If you want to, if you want to do that based on something that doesn't exist, such as design guidelines or a subdivision that was built 10 years ago on a private road, you know, be my guest. But we've got, we've got the planner up here advocating it, and this is gonna go commercial.
Well, excuse me a second, Mr. Namath. I'm not an advocate for the applicant, nor am I an end-store-for. Please understand that we present what we have. We have made our staff recommendation, yes, I will say that, and based on the analysis that we have done. But I just want to make it clear that we are not an advocate for the developer here. Now, that being said, I also want to point out that that situation you're referring to is from a subdivision. This is a rezoning. They are different in how they're handled in the ordinance. And I think I would also like to mirror what I heard Commissioner Sandlin say, that no one's asking, no one's denying anything at this point. I think they just want some more information from you at this point that they'd feel more comfortable looking at the application in light of that additional information. No one's denying anything. That motion that was just made was not for denial.
Anything, anything that, that is not currently a standard is something that you cannot legally hold me to. And I think it's very inappropriate to bring up a residential subdivision that was developed out 10 years ago into a discussion about something that's clearly gonna go commercial, where there are trailers and with as best of siding right across the road. Are there any questions from you guys that you might have for me?
I just want to add, I had no personal knowledge about any of the issues from 10 years ago. And I asked you when you came up earlier if you'd be willing to provide us some sort of a schematic and that would give us an idea of what your vision, your intent for the property was, and you seemed agreeable to that. And that's the reason that I asked to defer it till we could actually see that and all look at it together.
I can, I can provide you with a schematic of some guidelines, but I'm not gonna hire, I'm not gonna go hire a, a design expert to draw buildings that may or may not get built in the next five years. We're just asking for commercial because commercial is the best use for this particular piece of property. We're complying with all of your guidelines? Are there any further questions?
Just so we're clear, I'm not denying anything right at this point. We're asking for more information. If it struck a nerve with you, then that's your issue, not mine. Not this committee, not this board. We're trying to make the best decisions for Rutherford County and its growth as we can as planning commission members. If it offends you in any way, that's your issue, not mine. If I ask you a question about something you developed prior to this, I want to make sure that you're a good developer and that you're doing what you say, because you're making a lot of promises up here. If that offends you, that's your problem, not mine.
I'm not making any promises, except to comply with current standards.
It came out, sir, I'm speaking. It came out that everything is on a private road, okay? Something I didn't know. So that clears up my issue. Now, as long as your houses were being built by code, which I asked the building and codes director, and they have been. So there's not an issue. So I can ask any question I want to up here, and I did, and I'm satisfied. But like with the commissioner over here, I'm not satisfied with the open end of commercial here. Plain and simple. Other developers, other people come and develop, they have a plan for their commercial.
Thank you, Mr. Namath. Appreciate you coming back up. Any other questions or any other comments? Josh, a vote to defer could be only for 30 days.
Looking at, the question was, can we defer the request for a conditional use permit? And I am looking at Section 6.16 of your zoning resolution. That reads in part, "The Planning Commission or the Board of Zoning Appeals may continue the review of a conditional use request for 60 days from the date of the original meeting at which the request was heard." So my understanding of that is that as to the conditional use permit, you could defer it for a period of time if you wish. And that's not a vote for or against the request, it's a vote to defer it for additional information. And as to the conditional use permit, that's what Section 1.1, I mean, 6.16 says.
But the zoning...
The zoning, the zoning section doesn't specify one way or the other.
Motion to defer was for a specific time? We have a motion to defer for 30 days or until our next 6 o'clock meeting, which would be, looks like Monday, November 12?
Actually, Monday, Tuesday, November 13. The 12th is a holiday.
Veterans Day.
Veterans Day. It'll be a Tuesday night, Tuesday night at 6:00 PM, November 13.
I want to make sure that the reason for deferral is clear, that we are asking for additional information regarding the actual development as it pertains to the conditional use permit.
Yes, and I believe, I believe what your intent is is clear, and I'm fairly certain that the applicants and I will have some further conversations on this in the next couple of weeks.
Motion to defer for a month and a second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposition, that motion carries. This matter will come back up before the Planning Commission at our next scheduled 6:00 PM meeting, which will be now Tuesday, November the 13th, 6:00 PM, in this room. Thank you, commissioners. I forgot to mention our codes department report a little bit earlier. I think you have a copy of that in front of you. David, any comments on that?
I just might bring up some points. For the nine months of issuing permits this year, we're up 142 single-family dwellings. Our total permits are up 368 permits. So good numbers for us this year.
Quite a percentage. Thank you, David. Okay, next item on our agenda is staff reports and other business, Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just have one item. You have a handout on your tables that has a title on the top, says, "Issues discussed at the joint meeting between the Board of Commissioners and Planning Commission." Most of you, I think pretty much everybody here, was in that meeting on September 17. Thought it was a very informative meeting. There were a lot of good questions that were asked, a lot of good information passed between the boards as well as staff. There were a few issues that were brought up that we felt needed just a little bit more discussion. I'm not gonna go just into this just a whole lot, but some of those issues were fire protection, how adequate water service is determined by whom, mobile homes. There were some questions about how those are regulated under the new code, as well as accessory structures. But the one that I really wanted to touch on more than the others was more of the zoning process. Planning Commission had, and I believe the County Commission had talked about the possibility of maybe having a couple of flow charts to kind of give an example, just to show how the current process versus the proposed process would work. And you'll see, you've got two 11-by-17 sheets that kind of give, and just a quick overview of the process, how it would work under the current regulations, as well as how it would work under the proposed. You'll see that generally speaking, you know, you start at one end with a development application made, and then on the other end, you have finally building permits being issued. I will say that this is really a simplistic breakdown of how the whole process works. There's dozens of steps in here, probably literally, that I could put in here that would make this just, you probably had to put it on a huge wall or something like that to really get due it justice. But what I was really trying to focus on more than anything was, under the current regulations versus the proposed, how the development applications are handled. Under the current regulations, you'll see that after the development applications made to staff, the planning director has to use what we believe are more subjective guidelines, which I have included on an example, which I believe is the third sheet, well, second sheet, on your handout there. It says, "Example of current process," kind of gives you an overview of what those guidelines are between Type 1, Type 2, and Type 3 procedure. And you'll see that that becomes, at that point, really becomes a judgment call on the part of the planning director as to if it goes through the Type 1 process, which is without a public hearing, if it goes through the Type 2, which is the Board of Zoning Appeals, or the Type 3, like the ones we've considered tonight, Type 3 with rezonings. Under the proposed regulations, you'll see, after a development application is made to staff, it really is spelled out in the code, which is adopted, first of all, by the Planning Commission, is recommended, approved, and then finally adopted by the Board of Commissioners, as to what process something would go. Basically, what you would do is you would look at how the use is classified. You would determine what zones it's allowed in, and then that would tell you the process that you would have to follow. Either it's permitted, allowed by right, under P, special exception, which goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals, or N is just not allowed. If it's not allowed, the process ends unless a rezoning is requested. At that point, the rezoning application would, would begin at that point. So that's really the primary point that I was really trying to drive across with this, these couple of flow charts here. And the example that I used, which I included in the handout, was with a bed and breakfast-type establishment. Bed and breakfasts are, have been handled a couple of different ways in the past. Some go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, some have gone the route of the Type 3 and rezoning. Under the new code, you would see that a similar piece of property that was zoned RM or R15 would just be a special exception, go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. There really is no subjectivity at that point. You look at how it's classified, what process it would follow under that zone, and that's the process it would take. So I'll be willing to answer any questions on that. I'm gonna present this to the County Commission as well on Thursday, but I thought you would be interested in it as well.
Doug, within the new zone, if it, like, you got approved for a bed and breakfast, then somebody... then somebody buys the house, you know, 20 years down the road, is it still a bed and breakfast or...
It can still be used as that. The special exceptions, a lot like conditional use, is run with the land unless they're conditioned to expire. Not all of them are. So, if it's just, if you don't have any conditions for expiration, even a conditional use permit will just continue on with the land. If somebody wants to use that in the same, under the same parameters as it was originally approved, now, let's say for the sake of argument, somebody has a two-bedroom bed and breakfast and somebody wants to buy the property and make an addition and add another 10 rooms to it, just, I'm being ridiculous, but in that situation, they would have to come back through the process. You know, they'd have to be operating under the exact same parameters as were originally approved. Did that make sense? Okay. But that was really all I had, Mr. Chairman, if there are no other questions.
You're going to use, like, the bed and breakfast example and walk the County Commission through that?
That was my plan, yes, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for Doug?
Yes, this is for you to take, yes, sir.
Anything else under other business?
No, sir. I have nothing. Oh, I'm sorry. I will say one thing, that the advertisements for the public hearing for the zoning, the November 15 meeting ran in yesterday's Post and also the Daily News Journal. So, we had to advertise at least 30 days prior. So, with that, you may have seen it in the Daily News Journal. It was in the A section of the paper, about two or three pages in, half-page advertisement that we had in there.
Anything else?
That was it, sorry.
Anything else from the commission? We're adjourned.